Hello and welcome to today's PETA Town Hall meeting. I am Ben Williamson, PETA's Senior International Media Director, and I'll be co-hosting this event. Today, I'm being joined by PETA Senior Vice President Kathy Giliamo and Jeff Kerr, PETA's Senior Vice President and the PETA Foundation and General Counsel to PETA for our first ever Town Hall on the innovative and groundbreaking work of PETA's legal team. If you have access to a computer, you can stream this meeting at peta.org/maytownhall. Once you log in, you can type in your question in the field at the bottom of your screen and listen to the Town Hall without using your phone. If you are joining us on the phone at any time during today's Town Hall, you can press zero to ask a question. You will stay on the call, but then in a few minutes, you'll speak with a PETA staff member who will record your question and then put you back into the call so you can listen until we're able to take your question live near the end of our meeting. And we're going to be discussing many, many areas of PETA's work today, and so we're expecting to receive quite a high volume of questions. So if for some reason we're unable to get to your question while we're on the call, we will follow up with you directly over the coming days. And just while we wait for everyone joining the call now, a quick mention that at any time during today's conversation, you can press seven to make a much-needed donation to support all of PETA's vital work for animals. And if you're joining us online, you can go to peta.org/townhalldonate to make a gift as well. So for those of you just joining us right now, welcome to PETA's May Town Hall. My name is Ben Williamson, and I'm PETA's Senior International Media Director, and I'm responsible for bringing worldwide media attention to all of PETA's vital work for animals. PETA's Senior Vice President Kathy Giliamo will be on the line momentarily to tell us more about the wonderful new victory in our work to stop the US military's deadly trauma training exercises, as well as the next steps that you can take to help stop cruel exercises that are still being performed by other military branches. And a little later in our call, we'll be joined by PETA General Counsel Jeff Kerr, who will discuss a few of the many innovative ways that PETA's legal team is making a difference for animals. Both Kathy and Jeff will be here answering your questions live on this call at the end of today's presentation, so do be sure to press zero at any time on your phone to get your question in early. And now Kathy, on to you.
Thanks, Ben, and hello to everyone, especially to those of you who might be joining us for your first PETA Town Hall. If you've attended one of these meetings before, you may be used to hearing Ingrid on the line about now. She's traveling at the moment, but I promise that between myself, Jeff, and Ben, we'll do all we can to make sure that you leave today's Town Hall inspired by the work for animals that you helped make possible. We've got a lot to discuss today on the call, but before I dive in to tell you more about PETA's legal work for animals, I want to give an update on a campaign that we've seen significant progress on in recent weeks. You might recall that back in 2012, PETA released an eyewitness video of a ghastly Coast Guard trauma training exercise in Virginia. I'm sure you remember it if you saw it. That disturbing video showed training instructors cutting the legs off goats with tree trimmers and stabbing animals with scalpels and even cutting into their abdomens so that they could crudely pull out their organs. Veterinarians who watched that video noted that some of the goats could be seen moaning loudly and even kicking their legs as they were mutilated, and these are signs that they may not have been adequately anesthetized and were feeling every cut as they were dismembered. That same year, after PETA filed a complaint, the US Department of Agriculture cited the contractor behind those trainings for violations of the Animal Welfare Act. And we've made steady progress since then. By 2013, the US Army had greatly reduced its use of animals, and in 2014, after meeting with PETA, the Coast Guard reduced its animal use in these training drills by 50%. And since PETA released that groundbreaking video five years ago, the editorial board of the New York Times and numerous medical and veterans organizations that represent more than 255,000 physicians and doctors in trainings have all agreed with PETA that it's time to stop killing animals to train our troops. But even with that progress and the creation of regulations that require the use of non-animal training methods whenever they're available, and even also the US military's own studies confirming that human simulators are as good as and usually better than shooting, dismembering, and killing animals, these cruel exercises have continued. So just to give you some idea of how archaic these trainings are, there are 28 countries in the NATO Military Alliance, and just six, unfortunately, including the US, still abuse animals in deadly military trauma exercises. But I'm happy to report that today, there are really promising new signs that this may change soon. In April, following pressure from PETA and from members of Congress, the Coast Guard suspended the use of animals for trauma trainings. This made them the first branch of the US Armed Forces to do so. And earlier this month, that wonderful news became a bona fide victory when the Coast Guard's Commandant told members of Congress in response to questions by Representative Lucille Roeball Allard of California of his plans to replace what he called, and I quote, "abhorrent" training exercises with state-of-the-art simulators, noting that it was, quote, "the right thing to do to prepare Coast Guard members," unquote. That Coast Guard announcement is already sending ripples throughout the whole Department of Defense, and it reminds other US service branches that their excuses for continuing to kill goats and pigs in training exercises just doesn't make any sense. And one of the best ways that you can help us keep this pressure on the rest of the military to follow the Coast Guard's lead is by encouraging your members of Congress to support the Best Practices Act. And this is a piece of bipartisan legislation that would spare animals horrific deaths and better prepare military personnel to save the lives of injured troops. You'll find a link to our alert on the front of our website, or you can go to peta.org/trauma. We need every bit of support we can get for this bill, so please share our alert with your friends and with your family if you've already signed it. If you're in Canada, please visit peta.org/candatrava, all one word, and give a boost to our work to stop military trauma trainings on animals there as well.
Thank you, Kathy. And we talked in many of our past Town Halls about how we're working to end military trauma training exercises, so it's really great to hear that we're closer than ever to doing so. But of course, Kathy, as you know, there's been another big victory for animals this month, and I know many of our members are still celebrating this one.
That's right. Ben, by now, I'm sure all of you read the news about Ringling Brothers and Barnum &amp; Bailey Circus ending 146 years of animal suffering with their final show two weeks ago. Of course, it took decades of protests and intense campaigning by PETA and carrying people across the US for Ringling to finally consign itself to the dustbin of history where it belongs. What many of you may not know is how big a role PETA Foundation's legal department, led by Jeff Kerr and the focus of today's call, played in making that historic move. Every time PETA learned about a violation of the Animal Welfare Act by Ringling, we slammed the USDA with legal complaints. We filed more than 120 formal complaints since 1995 alone. Ringling allowed a lion named Clyde to bake it to death in a boxcar. They killed an eight-month-old elephant named Ricardo, whom they'd caused to break both his legs during training, and they viciously beat a young elephant named Angelica with a bullhook while she was chained. These are all gross violations of the law, and it took us years to get USDA to take any action. But after numerous meetings with our legal team, the USDA fined Ringling $270,000, the largest fine in circus history, and that was the beginning of the end. After that, with the continued protests at every single show and the agitation in every other form, including all of our powerful ads and online videos exposing Ringling's abuses, it's over.
It is indeed, and thanks for that, Kathy. It looks like some of those joining us today are already submitting their questions for Jeff and Kathy about both of those victories. So if you'd like to join them in asking your own question about this or anything else that we're discussing today, simply press zero on your phone. You'll be connected to a staff member from PETA who will take your question and put you back into the call. And those of you who are just joining us on the web can also ask a question at any time through the field at the bottom of your browser window. And a quick reminder that you can strengthen all of our work for animals, including our groundbreaking legal work, by pressing seven on your phone at any time today and making a gift to PETA. And if you're online, you can go to peta.org/townhalldonate, all one word, and make a gift there as well.
Right. As Ben mentioned, today's meeting focuses on how our legal team is advancing the animal rights movement. And one area of PETA where I've seen that firsthand is in the vital investigative work that I oversee. At PETA, investigations don't always entail going undercover. Sometimes, we investigate facilities by using records kept by public agencies, and this requires us to submit requests using FOIA, Freedom of Information laws, that require public agencies to release inspection reports and all kinds of other documents to the public. Laboratories, in particular, fight FOIA requests tooth and nail, as you can imagine. A trade group that attempts to justify even the cruelest experiments on animals has gone so far as to publish a guide on how to thwart these requests. That's because, as one university stated in a legal brief, and I quote, "The records contain detailed accounts of procedures conducted on animals that may inflame negative reactions," unquote. And it's true. Learning about animal torture tends to make people want to do more to stop it. But woe unto anybody who fights our open records request because they will immediately get the smackdown from our legal team. Our opponents quickly learn that PETA simply doesn't take no for an answer. And I could rattle off a few dozen victories here that these battles have led to, but here are just two brief examples. A county animal shelter in Davis, Utah, outside Salt Lake City, sold a dog called Sheena to the University of Utah to be tormented in experiments. After we filed a lawsuit, that county was forced to release its records revealing that it had been required by law to sell 100 dogs and cats for painful experiments. As a result of that, we were able to rescue Sheena and find her a loving home, and the county was forced to pay $17,000 toward PETA's legal fees. But best of all, the state passed a law ending the mandate for shelters to sell animals to laboratories.
I'm sure many of you have seen the disturbing pictures of Double Trouble, the cat who was used in the deadly brain experiments at the University of Wisconsin. She had holes drilled into her skull, metal restraint posts screwed into her heads, and steel coils implanted into her eyes. And the school was so determined to hide photos from these experiments that they fought us in court for three long years to keep us from getting them. But Jeff's legal team did, and we got the images. And we launched a full-on attack, which included federal complaints, demonstrations, and plastering photos of Double Trouble and others on city buses, flooding the administration with hundreds of thousands of emails from supporters, and even getting actor James Cromwell to disrupt the school's Board of Regents meeting. And it worked. The experiment ended, and the laboratory closed its doors, and its lead experimenter retired, and the remaining cats were adopted.
Thanks, Ben. Another crucial way that we learn about animal abusing facilities is by searching their USDA inspection records, which until recently have been available on the USDA website. But this year, something really terrible happened. All this important information that was once online, like how many animals are caged at each facility, and the ways in which workers have abused and neglected animals, was removed. Without those records being publicly available, animal abusers in thousands of zoos and circuses and laboratories, puppy mills and other facilities can shield their behavior from public scrutiny, and that's why we're now suing the USDA to force it to restore those records, which it had no legal right to remove.
Absolutely. And before today's Town Hall, I checked and saw that nearly 65,000 people have already contacted their members of Congress about that shameful USDA move through our web alert. And I do encourage anyone on this call to do so as well. If you haven't already, please visit our website and do that. And if you have a question about the progress in this important case or anything else that we're discussing today, now's the time to press zero on your phone, and you can ask it a bit later in the meeting.
Thanks, Ben. Before I introduce Jeff, I'd like to just share a little history to give you a better idea of how far the legal team has come since PETA was founded. In the beginning, PETA had one lawyer, Phil Hirschkopf. He's a former Green Beret and the founder of the Virginia ACLU. Phil won the Washington May Day case for civil liberties, and he assisted in the trial of the Chicago Seven. Many in the legal profession know Phil as the lawyer who won the US Supreme Court case, Loving v. Virginia, that overturned a law prohibiting interracial marriage. Ingrid met Phil after she was arrested handing out leaflets against a rodeo in Virginia soon after she helped found PETA in 1980, and Phil took her case, and he quickly showed just how good he is. He tape-recorded the police officer saying that all Ingrid did was hand out leaflets. But when the officer came to court and told the judge that she was also blocking traffic, Phil said, "Are you sure? Can I refresh your memory by playing you the tape where I specifically asked you if she had done anything other than pass out leaflets?" So the officer gulped, and he said, "Oh, I was misremembering. That's all she did." And the case against Ingrid was dismissed. Well, that wasn't good enough. We then sued the rodeo organizers, and they not only had to pay PETA $15,000 in legal fees, but we wouldn't settle until they agreed to permanently ban rodeos. To give you some idea of how determined our legal team is, Phil was defending us in the landmark lawsuit, Baracini v. PETA, while his son was due to be born. And those who've been with us for some time may remember, this was the case that eventually put Las Vegas showman and notorious orangutan abuser Bobby Baracini out of business. By the time the case had ended, Phil's son was 14. The work that Phil started began to grow dramatically 21 years ago when Jeff Kerr came on board as PETA's General Counsel. Jeff worked tirelessly to build PETA Foundation's legal department from the ground up, bringing in some of the brightest and most compassionate legal minds that he could find. Today, he heads the PETA Foundation's Philip J. Hirschkopf Legal Department, which, with 19 attorneys, is the largest and the most effective legal team working for animal rights in the world. Jeff's team has become so accomplished that they were just named Best Legal Department of the Year by the prestigious Corporate Counsel magazine, only the second nonprofit and the first-ever animal group to receive that distinction. Jeff, over to you.
Thanks very much, Kathy, for the wonderful introduction. Hello, everyone. It's great to be with you all today. After more than two decades at the helm of the PETA Foundation's legal department, I can tell you that it's hard to predict the challenges that will be thrown our way. And in a funny way, if you'll allow me, it reminds me of the comedy routine by Jeff Foxworthy, who some of you may know. It goes, "If you blank, you might be a redneck." I think you've probably heard this. But in our case, it's often, "If blank, you might be a lawyer for PETA." So for example, if you're researching how much of which body parts can be exposed by a protester without being charged with indecent exposure, you might be a lawyer for PETA. Or if you need to find out if a knife-wielding, blood-drenched Colonel Samir's bobblehead doll is a trademark infringement, you might be a lawyer for PETA. Well, you get the idea. But of course, our work is extremely serious, and from day one, I've known that to use the law to create real change for animals, we can't stick within the narrow confines of what's already been done, what's already been litigated. We have to push the envelope, and except for the US Postal Service, no one pushes more envelopes than PETA. Here's just a handful of legal precedents that we've put in the history books. When protesters had been sued using laws designed to fight organized crime, the US Supreme Court adopted PETA's argument and struck down that ruling. We also won the first state Supreme Court decision upholding the right to film animal abuse with a hidden camera and to publicize that video. And we won the first-ever British case that upheld our right to show the world PETA's undercover video footage as well. Now, one vital way that the PETA Foundation's legal team protects animals is by protecting PETA itself from our opponents. We're not always the ones filing the lawsuits. Sometimes, we're the ones being sued, and we've had some major players try to take us down, and I'll go through a couple of examples. PETA was the first organization to launch an international campaign against cruelty in the wool industry. In Australia, which is where most of the world's wool comes from, we expose this practice called mulesing, which is where huge strips of flesh are cut from the hind ends of lambs with gardening shears and no pain relief. After we convinced Liz Claiborne, H&amp;M, and dozens of other major retailers to stop selling wool from mules sheep, the world's largest wool trade group sued us to make us stop, but it didn't work. They eventually not only had to withdraw their lawsuit, they also had to fast-track alternatives to mulesing because we got them to agree to phase it out. We were also sued by one of the largest chinchilla farms in California. It claimed that it was breeding chinchillas as pets, but a PETA exposé revealed that it was also electrocuting the animals and selling their skins to the fur industry. We rescued all 420 chinchillas from that farm and closed it down. The owner then slapped us with a defamation lawsuit. Now, in this case, SLAP stands for Strategic Lawsuit Against Public Participation. These are lawsuits that are designed to silence critics by burdening them with the cost of a lawsuit. Fortunately, California has an excellent anti-SLAP statute, which we were able to use, and we got the case dismissed. Now, I'd like to share with you another example of PETA's legal precedents. I'm sure many attending this Town Hall are aware of so-called AGGAG bills. These are the bills that are designed to stop anyone, especially PETA, from documenting animal abuse on farms and in slaughterhouses. They're insidious, as you can imagine, and PETA has performed exactly those kinds of investigation since our inception, so we're not going to be locked out. Through hard work, we've been able to stop them from making it to the governors' desks in 17 states, and in four states where they were passed into law, we filed lawsuits. In 2014, we made the history books when we won our lawsuit challenging Idaho's AGGAG law, and for the first time ever, a court declared an AGGAG law unconstitutional. And for the cherry on top, the state was ordered to pay PETA and the other plaintiffs nearly $250,000 in attorney's fees. We've now got lawsuits challenging AGGAG laws pending against Utah, Wyoming, and North Carolina, and we're working hard to secure similar outcomes in all three of those states.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeff just mentioned attempts in Australia and California to stop PETA's work for animals that his team helped us overcome. And there's another I want to bring up because it hits really close to home for me. Some of you may have attended our Town Hall last August that focused on PETA's work for horses, particularly those who are victims of the dirty business of horse racing. While no horses may have died on the track during the two Triple Crown races during the last month, it's worth remembering, I think, that an average of 24 horses suffer fatal breakdowns every single week in races that aren't necessarily covered by the sports segments on your local news. The horse racing industry operates with no federal oversight and 38 different sets of regulations, one for each state where horse racing remains legal. And I'm sure many of you on the call today have seen our exposé of Steve Asmussen, one of the most prominent trainers in horse racing. When our investigation revealed that he misused drugs to keep injured horses running, he threatened to sue us. And with the help of Jeff's team, not only did we successfully fight off his lawsuit, but our exposé resulted in huge reforms in the horse racing industry. The New York State Gaming Commission now requires that any medication administered to a horse must be prescribed by a veterinarian for a specific physical condition. So this prevents trainers from tossing drugs into feed just to boost metabolism, like Asmussen did. And the rules now require tighter monitoring of horses who are given a medication that prevents bleeding from the lungs, and all because we documented that it was being administered to almost every horse, not for medical reasons, but as a performance-enhancing drug.
Indeed, and I hosted that August meeting as well, and I don't think I realized until then just how important a role that the PETA Foundation's legal team had in making those horse racing reforms happen. I just wanted to say, it looks like we've already got some great questions from our listeners lined up for the end of today's Town Hall, but there is room for one or two more. So if there's anything that you'd like to ask Jeff or Kathy, anything at all about what we've been talking about today, or just anything that you've got burning on the top of your mind, then please press zero on your phone to speak to a PETA representative. And while you're on the line, I do hope that you'll consider supporting the landmark work for animals that we've been discussing here today. You can press seven on your phone and make a really much-needed gift right now.
Thanks very much, Ben. I'm sure you all remember that the 13th Amendment to the US Constitution is the one that outlawed slavery. We all remember that from high school social studies. But did you know that nowhere in that amendment does it state that the amendment applies exclusively to human beings? Well, it doesn't. It merely outlaws the condition of slavery. So we sued SeaWorld for holding wild-caught orcas as slaves in violation of the 13th Amendment. We were supported by Harvard Law Professor and preeminent constitutional scholar Lawrence Tribe, who in writing about the case said, and I'll read a brief quote, "The Constitution's bold language and broadly expressed principles offer themselves to each generation as we struggle to define our national values in an ever-changing world. It seems to me no abuse of the Constitution to invoke it on behalf of non-human animals cruelly confined for purposes of involuntary servitude," close quote. Now, while the judge in that case eventually ruled against us, it marked the first time a US court considered constitutional rights for animals, and you can imagine, it created a huge international and continuing debate about the ethics of captivity. And it also garnered international press about how the orcas are kept and used, and it's resulted in law schools debating the issue of animal rights. And we're not just challenging SeaWorld, we're also racing the clock to try to free a 50-year-old orca named Lolita from the Miami Seaquarium. She was taken from her pod, her family, over 45 years ago and is being kept in the world's smallest orca tank. Now, thanks to a PETA lawsuit and a formal petition after that lawsuit, we've forced the government to stop excluding her from the Protections of the Endangered Species Act, or ESA. We're now suing the seaquarium under the ESA to try to get Lolita released. We're also suing the USDA alleging that the issuance of the seaquarium's federal license was illegal because the facility doesn't comply with the Federal Animal Welfare Act. Now, you can imagine, the obstacles look overwhelming, and there is a chance that she won't live long enough to make it out, but I want you to know, we're doing everything we can to win the day for her and potentially establish a precedent for animals in captivity. If possible, Lolita may even be released back into her family pod. She actually recognized her pod's calls decades after being captured. The orca believed to be her mother, who's estimated to be about 86 years old, is still thriving.
She is indeed, Jeff, so thank you very much for that. But I know that Lolita and SeaWorld cases have obviously made headlines in the legal and animal rights communities, but there's definitely another significant challenge, a legal challenge that you're heading up, that I know that many on today's Town Hall will be aware of and indeed want to learn more, the so-called Monkey Selfie lawsuit?
Yes, thanks for the question, Ben. Actually, just last week, I spoke to a joint meeting of the Chicago Bar Association and the Copyright Society of the USA about that case and about granting copyrights to non-human animals. The suit is about much more than just an image, though. We're fighting for the rights of this handsome fellow, that I think those of you who are online can see his picture, a crested macaque named Neruto, who lives in the jungle in Indonesia. One day, he picked up a photographer's unattended camera, watched his reflection in the lens, and made a series of faces while continually pressing the shutter button and creating several photos, including the now internationally famous Monkey Selfies. Now, the owner of the camera wrongly claimed to own the copyright, so we sued. We're making the point that Neruto rightfully owns the copyright because he undeniably took the photographs. And the law on this point is clear, it's the one who takes the photo who owns it, not the one who merely owns the camera. Now, to tell you something about crested macaques, their numbers have declined 90% in the last 25 years, and their habitat is being destroyed by encroaching humans. And so what our case asks the court is to allow proceeds from the copyright in the Monkey Selfie photographs to be used to benefit Neruto and his community and to protect their habitat. Now, this is, this case, as you, is, I hope, comes- Now, this is, this case, as you, is, I hope comes through, is more than just a topic for bar association meetings. It's being closely watched in law schools, and legal essays about it are everywhere. We'll be arguing the case in San Francisco on July 12th before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. If we win, it'll mark the first time that an animal has ever been declared the owner of property, the copyright in the photographs, rather than being declared a piece of property himself. And this is another critically important step toward establishing fundamental rights for animals for their own sake, not for their utility to humans.
Thanks, Jeff. While the PETA Foundation's legal team continues to pursue and indeed win these precedent-setting animal rights cases left, right, and center, their groundbreaking work for Neruto and other animals does require significant commitments of both time and resources. So just before we bring in Kathy one more time and go to your questions, please, I do hope that you'll show your support now for all that we're discussing here today by pressing seven on your phone and making a generous gift right now. So Kathy?
Yes, we've talked a lot today about the broader animal rights implications of PETA's legal work, but before we take your questions, I just wanted to recall a few of the many, many individual animals Jeff's team is helping every day. I know that some of you are very familiar with PETA's work to shut down the hideous roadside zoos and the pseudo-sanctuaries like the one in Michigan that a PETA eyewitness helped expose just last week. As we've mentioned, Jeff's team has been instrumental in getting the USDA to take action against many of these facilities. And in some cases, like that of the recently shut-down Mobile Zoo, their persistence has led to dramatic rescues and multiple criminal charges against facility owners. In April, PETA helped secure freedom for Elsie. She's a North American black bear who had been held by that seedy Alabama zoo since 1996, along with two of her cubs, and all three are today thriving in a wonderful sanctuary in Colorado. Elsie's case isn't unique. Across the U.S., there are many bears like her, and they're suffering horrendously in concrete pits, roadside zoos, or shoddy backyard pens. Some of these bears have never been walked on grass during their entire lives. Instead, they live and they sleep on concrete. Others were surviving on a diet of rotting bread or dog food, and some looked so haggard that it was almost hard to tell they were bears at all. PETA saw that few people were speaking up for these bears and that if we didn't do something, the misery they were experiencing would be all these bears would ever know. So with help from Jeff's team, we went to work. We linked up with wildlife agencies, with generous donors, and with reputable animal sanctuaries across the country to shut down these bear pits and roadside zoos, to rescue the bears from shoddy backyard pens, and arrange for those bears to be transported to brand-new lives. And now, after just five years of work, PETA has helped rescue sixty bears so far from squalor, and we've given them a chance to roam huge habitats. They can interact with other bears now, and sometimes they can even raise their own young for the very first time in their lives. Each of these bears is finally being treated the way they truly deserve, and each of them can be grateful for the hard work and the determination of the PETA Foundation lawyers who helped make it happen.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So it looks like we've got quite a few people waiting to ask Kathy and Jeff questions about the work that we've been discussing during this town hall, so I think we should get right to it. We have a question, a live caller. Adrian from Juniper has a question about the fate of the Ringling Brothers' animals. Adrian, are you on the line?
I'm here. Thanks for taking my call.
Thank you. What's, very welcome, it's nice to talk to you. What is your question for Kathy or Jeff?
Um, it is, well, first of all, thank you, Kathy, Jeff, and to you, Ben. I'm just wondering about the update on all of the animals from Ringling Brothers. The last post I think I saw on Facebook, it was probably back in February, I feel like, and it was that the elephants are potentially going to a sanctuary, but I don't think I've seen an update since on the elephants or any of the animals. So that's my question.
Kathy, would you like me to take that?
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much for your questions. Nice talking with you. The elephants, as we understand it, and let me add as an aside before I get into it, we're watching them very, very closely. We're watching Ringling with an eagle eye. They have a facility in Florida where, as we understand it, they're going to be keeping these elephants, and it is nothing, it is not a sanctuary at all, not even remotely. This is the facility where they've been kept in prior years when they weren't on the road traveling with the circus. Many of them are still chained at various parts of the day, and it's just, it's not a sanctuary. We're glad they're off the road, but those animals need to be, those elephants need to be retired to actual real sanctuaries, and we're trying to keep up the pressure on that. The other animals are a mix. Some of the animals that they use were actually owned by other exhibitors who are very much on our watch list, and we are, we track them all over the country wherever they go, and we try to get venues, various venues around the country, to refuse to allow them to bring those animals to their community to perform. We're having some great success at that because obviously if we cut off their revenue stream, we hope they'll leave the business and get the animals to appropriate sanctuaries. And wherever somebody's going out of business, we will step in to try to help get those animals to appropriate sanctuaries. And the other animals, non-elephants that Ringling owns and is using, we're still trying to keep an eye out for everywhere they go, whether they're going to be rented out to somebody else or exactly where they're going to end up. Ringling is a notoriously secretive organization. They don't want to, they don't want to have the lid pulled off of their continuing abuse of these animals, and so it's a difficult task, but please know we're on it every single day.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Adrian, for your question. Next, we've got another person who's been waiting patiently on the line. Cheryl from Streetsboro, I think I'm saying that right, has a question on Texas A&amp;M for Kathy, I believe. Cheryl, are you there?
Yes, I am. Um, I have a, I have two questions, actually. Um, yeah, I am very interested in what's going on there with Texas A&amp;M University using the dogs and the experiments. I also would like to know, how effective is signing the petitions in, in helping the animals? Does, I mean, do they, do they pay attention to the petitions, or, you know, how effective is that?
Yeah, those are very good questions. When you participate in an Action Alert, I'll take the second question first. When you participate in an Action Alert on our website, we, those send emails directly to the target of the campaign. So at this point, Texas A&amp;M has received a quarter of a million emails from people who want those experiments ended, and they're incredibly important. We win entire campaigns with email campaigns sometimes. With, with a little bit of publicity and a hundred thousand emails, you can get a lot done. And so I hand it to our social media folks for making that happen, so it's very important. We're in the middle of a hot campaign against Texas A&amp;M, and what, what the caller's referring to is the use of golden retrievers who are specifically bred to develop a form of canine muscular dystrophy, and then they're experimented on. And these experiments have been going on for about thirty-five years. Most recently, at Texas A&amp;M University's, we received video of how these dogs live, and it is really the most heartbreaking thing you'll ever see. But I think you should see it if you haven't. Please go to our site and participate in our Action Alert campaign. The dogs become crippled at quite a young age. And I think what's disturbing for people who have muscular dystrophy or know someone who does is that these experiments haven't yielded anything. There is no effective treatment against muscular dystrophy that has come from these experiments. Obviously, there's no cure. So why is this still going on? The experimenter himself, who leads this, this set of studies, has admitted that animal studies don't translate to humans very effectively, and that's what we're trying to get shut down. We've put in enormous pressure on the university, and so much so that they're being very misleading, if not outright lying, about the nature of these studies. But we still need a good deal of support, so if you haven't done this, please do go online and participate in this. We're not going to stop until we shut this lab down. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, I didn't mean to speak over you. Cheryl, I wanted to address one other thing from a legal perspective in relation to your question about does signing the petitions help. I can tell you, undeniably, it does. There are a number of legal matters I get involved in with some of these exhibitors or experimenters or whatever, and I hear from their lawyers. So we have the, the age-old lawyer-to-lawyer call, and they want us to go away. And one of the first things almost always in these kinds of conversations is they say, can you call your people off? And the reason is because they know that it matters. It's having a huge impact. It is a major thorn in their side, and I've even had conversations with lawyers where they've related that some of the, the targets' workers are just demoralized because they've either, they didn't even, even know about what was going on in the, in the facility where they worked, for example, or they never stopped to think about it. And it's somebody's job to look at and collect and, and see all these emails. And I tell them every time, not only am I not going to call them off, this is exactly the kind of tenacious advocacy you can expect every day going forward until the practice we're talking about stops. And that brings so many people to ending what they're doing. I just cannot overstate the importance of that kind of, of that kind of work by you guys.
Thank you very much, Jeff. And do please, everyone, when you see those petitions going around, even the paper petitions as well as the Action Alerts, do please sign them. It's incredibly important, and as Jeff and Kathy said, it really does work. So next, we're going to another live question. Stephen from Miami has a question about AGGAG, but just before we do, I want to thank Stephen for his $25 donation tonight, very generous, and to anybody who is pressing seven right now to make a donation like Stephen has done, thank you as well. So Stephen, you have a question on AGGAGs?
Uh, yes, I did. Can you hear me?
I can indeed. Go ahead, Stephen.
Yes, um, the question that I had on it was, the, the Idaho case was actually one of the newer cases. The Utah one is an older case, and I understand that the North Carolina case has been going on for a while. Wyoming, I think, is newer. But what is the holdup on those other three cases as to why they're not moving through the system? Are they caught up somewhere legally where, you know, it's, somebody's not making the legal maneuver that, because they, they're not sure about the case? Or what is the, the reasoning behind that? And then the second part of it that I had was in relation to, I'm hearing that the Supreme Court turned down listening to Missouri and Oklahoma who wanted to do something about the California egg thing, where they wanted to say, well, you know, we're, states' rights, you know, we don't want that. They didn't take the case, and now those particular congresspeople are looking to attach something to the farm bill to kind of take away the rights of these states that have said, no, we, we don't want this kind of stuff going on, like California, maybe Massachusetts.
Stephen, thank you, thank you for the question. Let me start with AGGAG. The reason for the timing is nothing more than our overburdened federal court system. We are pushing as hard and as forcefully as we possibly can in every one of those cases, but it is a continuing frustration that courts just simply do not move as quickly as we would like, especially when such important matters are at issue. Idaho did move a little bit more quickly through the system. Utah is, is moving. We've, we argue we're called dispositive motions. In other words, these are motions that may result in, in a decision in the case. Same in North Carolina. North Carolina is, we're actively working on that. It's just how the court system works, unfortunately. The, to switch to the second question, we are aware of those efforts. We're watching carefully. We feel very strongly that we're on solid legal ground that that kind of federal legislative overreach would probably be unconstitutional. It's a very complex constitutional disagreement that's involved in those kinds of cases involving what's called interstate commerce and where the line of federal authority stops and the line of state authority as sort of independent sovereign states begins, and that's really what's at issue. So like any of those kinds of complex constitutional cases, the devil's really going to be in the details of what any ultimate legislation seems to say. I could also almost guarantee you that if something like that gets passed, it will be challenged in court.
Thank you, Jeff, for that, and I hope it answers your question, Stephen. We're going to go for the sake of balance to a written question now. Sam, who hasn't given a location, but Sam asks, considering how divided the American political landscape seems to be, how likely is it that Congress will get the other branches of military to stop trauma training? Kathy, do you want to take this one?
Sure. Yeah, I'm very hopeful on this front. There is tremendous bipartisan support. The Best Practices Act, the bill that I mentioned a little bit ago, is the legislation that would end the use of animals for these trauma-training drills. And it was introduced by a Republican and a Democrat together. It has support from both sides of the House, and I think that what we find in Congress is that there are many Republicans and Democrats alike who are opposed to any use of animals that is objectionable and cruel in this way. So I'm very hopeful about this. I think, I think that we will see, first of all, not only more people sign up to co-sign for that bill, but also that puts a tremendous pressure on the Department of Defense as they see that both Republicans and Democrats are opposing this practice.
Thanks, Kathy. We'll take another online question next, from Jason in New York City. Question for Jeff, I believe. Is there a legal case that you or your team have won for animals that you are particularly proud of?
Jason, thank you for your question. Boy, that's, that's a tough one. I'm incredibly proud of every one of, first of all, the, the folks who dedicate their legal careers to doing this work. I, I have the privilege of getting to take credit for what is largely their work on calls like this. But asking me if there's a case I'm particularly proud of is, is a bit like asking me if I have a favorite companion animal. It's, you love them all equally, and they're all so important in their own way. I, I think that in addition to the ones we've talked about tonight, I, I think the, the few that stand out to me in addition are the fact that we were able to get the first convictions of factory farm employees for abusing pigs, and that happened in Iowa, which is the largest pig producer, pig-raising state in the country. And we were also able to get the first felony cruelty to animals charges for abusing birds on factory farms at a, at a turkey facility. And to break through that and have those wins and convictions for people abusing birds in the horror that it's factory farming, I think just sent shockwaves through the legal and, um, um, factory farming communities. I, I'm also particularly proud, we, we were able, in relation to exotic animals, the exotic animal trade is just horrendous internationally. And we also succeeded in getting the largest seizure of animals in U.S. history, more than 26,000 animals, when a PETA investigation revealed horrific cruelty to animals by a reptile and exotic animal dealer in Texas a few years ago. And that guy became an international fugitive, and again, these, these are cases that are just ground-shaking, earth-shaking in these, in these industries. And I think it also is, they're incredibly important because they show a level of cooperation and willingness on the part of local, state, and federal law enforcement to take appropriate actions in response to our complaints.
Thank you, Jeff. We have another online question from Elizabeth in Albuquerque, New Mexico, says, how did the USDA pulling those violation reports off their website impact PETA's work? Kathy, can you tell Elizabeth a little about, about that?
Sure. Thanks, Elizabeth, for that question. It affected many divisions at PETA. I head up our work to end experimentation on animals, and so I can tell you very definitely that it was a major impediment to getting our work done on a daily and monthly basis. We start every day, and, or we did start every day in our department, by looking at inspection reports that the USDA had filed. reports that the USDA had filed online the night before, and that gave us a little snapshot. What is going on in the world of laboratories? Who is violating the laws? What are, what are the issues? Who are the animals who need the most help? And that was suddenly taken away. So, we couldn't do that daily work. That's the first thing. The, the other thing is that when we have a whistleblower from inside a facility or somebody with knowledge of a facility, and that happens on an almost daily basis, we could no longer go to the USDA website and see what that, what that facility's record was. Had they had many violations before? What animals did they have there? Who was being abused? What laws had been violated? All that was suddenly taken away. Now, they've put some of those records back, but they're badly out of order. They're not updated in a timely way, and we don't have any way of knowing what's happening with ongoing investigations by the upper divisions at the USDA. So it had a, a serious impact on our work, and Jeff may want to say something about that too, since he heads up the, the work on our lawsuit against the USDA.
Yeah, thank you very much, Kathy. Elizabeth, when that happened, shortly after it happened, we and a small group of, of other animal protection organizations immediately filed a lawsuit against the USDA in a federal court in Washington to try to stop this practice. Um, there's, there's something called the EFOIA. E stands, standing for electronic, but it's basically a, a law, an amendment to the FOIA legislation several years ago that requires the USDA to post information that's regularly requested, and they were doing it for a number of years. And, you know, there, there were hundreds of thousands of documents online. And in the most bizarre rationale, they've stated publicly that, well, they, they suddenly had privacy concerns about the names and addresses of the facilities that were identified on those forms. Well, they, these are regulated entities. We know who they are. We know where they are. So, that was clearly just a, a ridiculous, a ridiculous justification on their part. The case is moving forward. Unfortunately, as with Stephen's question, the federal court system in DC moves slowly as well, but we are aggressively litigating over that. And, and it really is, as Kathy said, it's really insidious because, you know, some of these FOIA requests can take literally years to be fulfilled by an agency, and, and in this day and age where things move at, literally at light speed as far as information is concerned, it's just wholly unacceptable for them to be flouting the FOIA law in that way.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Kathy. We have a live caller on the line, Teresa, and I think I'm pronouncing this correctly, Bo, is it? Teresa, you on the line?
Yes, I, I live in Lafayette, Louisiana, and I'm just wondering what local organizations I could contact to work more directly with PETA besides just, of course, sending funds to help support the organization? I was just wondering, again, I, I know this is a very basic question, but I, I would just like to get more involved as far as being able to volunteer for PETA. I will be retiring in about a year, and I would have some time, you know, to be able to volunteer services, but I don't know where or how to do it.
That's a great question. I'll do, oh, sorry, we'll both answer you.
No, go ahead. Kathy, go ahead.
I, I can start, and then Jeff may have something to add to it. We do have a division, Teresa, at PETA that, that, that works with local activists from all over the country, and you can, you can get in touch with that division, and you can, probably the easiest way would be to send an email to info@peta.org and ask about volunteering locally. There are activists in Lafayette, Louisiana, I happen to know because I had a call from there today about a horse, so I was, I was working on that. So there are people in your area who care deeply and are active, so we can probably connect you with those folks.
Thank you, Kathy. We would also, Teresa, we'll, we'll get you some info after the call, so don't worry about that. Right, we have one more question, I think, well, one question now. Denise in Anaheim, California, says, now that Ringling's off the road, what is PETA's next priority for animals in other circuses and zoos? Jeff, Kathy, who wants to take this one?
I can, Kathy, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll be happy to take a shot at this one. Well, the short answer, Denise, is it's more of the same. We are, there, there are unfortunately still a handful of circuses out there that are using, that are using elephants and that are using animals, and probably most notable among them are some circuses I'm sure you have heard of. One is called Universal Soul Circus. This is a circus based out of Atlanta, and of course, various Shriners circuses in communities around the country. And while they may not directly own the animals themselves, as I mentioned when we were talking about Ringling earlier, they will contract with certain other exhibitors who have rap sheets as long as my arm of Animal Welfare Act violations. And so, in the, in the legal department, we have a division called the Captive Animal Law Enforcement Division, and it is dedicated solely to going after those kinds of exhibitors. We check their information, where they're going. Like Kathy said, we start every day looking, looking for information about them, social media, internet, agencies, you name it, and we're doing exactly everything we can, as we did with Ringling, follow them around the country, writing to venues, protesting at their performances to try to get them to stop. And in addition to the circuses, there's the roadside zoo aspect, and Kathy tou- touched on this in some of her comments about the Mobile Zoo, but there are these deplorable roadside zoos around the country that are keeping animals in just squalid conditions. And one of our initiatives right now is pursuing lawsuits under the Federal Endangered Species Act, or ESA, that I talked about on the call, to try to get endangered animals, chimpanzees, lions, tigers, out of these hellholes so that they can be relocated to hopefully reputable and appropriate sanctuaries.
Thanks for that, Jeff, and I'm afraid we are running out of time, so Kathy, I think I'd better hand it back over to you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you all for all those great questions. As Ben mentioned at the beginning of this town hall, if we didn't have time to get to yours, we will get in touch with you about it in the next few days and get you some answers. If you're on the phone right now, I have a quick favor to ask of you. Can you please stay on the line after we sign off, and if you do, you'll be able to share your gratitude with the men and the women who work in PETA's, the PETA Foundation's legal team for the many precedent-setting victories that we've talked about today? And we'll also welcome your suggestions for future town hall topics. So thank you again for your support of our work and for everything that you do to make a difference in the lives of animals. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, Kathy, and thanks to Jeff, and thanks to you all. This concludes PETA's Town Hall meeting. I do hope that you'll join us again on June twenty-eighth for our next town hall, where we'll be discussing how you can help the many animals who are right now being killed for their fur, their skins, and their feathers. So thanks once again for joining us, and do have a good evening.